Okay, let's call a meeting to order. It's Tuesday, February 27, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, minutes are reports received and filed?
None.
Commissioner Committee Liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
We got the Chambers Annual Report and Economic Development Plan tonight. We got a meeting about the BMW interchange out in Wardsville tomorrow.
Is that with that MoDOT or?
Yeah, MoDOT Wardsville. I don't know who else is invited. If you want to go, it's at 10 o'clock at their central district office. I think it's just going to kind of be to see if anything has changed in the last two years. I don't know. I know they're looking at it because we've got the small communities money grants and they'd like to be able to use some of that money towards it if they can use it for anything. We've got Cole County Communities Thursday morning, Coal Can Extension Thursday night, Eastside Business Association Friday. So about it then.
So we got Wellness Wednesday tomorrow morning at Emergency Services, is that right? And I'm doing some, uh, I'm sitting at EMS Dispatch and doing some supervisor ride-alongs tomorrow morning. Then I got an RPC executive meeting at 11:30 in Ashland. And you already said Communities, right?
Yeah.
That's it.
I've got all those. And then the captain and some of the crew of the USS Jefferson City are here Thursday through next Monday, so I'll be doing a lot of stuff with them too, but then otherwise I've got down everything you've got. Appointments by commission, reappointment of Daniel Renfro and Thomas Quinn to Cole County You want to talk, Jim, or?
They've both been on the board for you, uh, three to six years. I can't remember now exactly, both Tom and Dan. Dan is currently the chair and Tom is the vice chair. It's been great to have on the board. Love to see him reappointed.
I'm fine with them. You got, is your board full right now?
Is the board full?
Um, no, there's, uh, Suzie Register, her term is up at the end of February. She does not wish to be reappointed, but other than that, uh, that will create a vacancy February 28th or March 1st.
But you have someone that wants to be on the board, correct?
Um, Mrs. Miles, Tina Miles. Her son, um, is, I'm going to say about 30 years old. He's used, uh, respite care for 20 years. He's in the sheltered workshop. I do not know her maiden name. Uh, she's currently divorced. I believe her ex is Travis Miles. Longtime resident of Cole County, Jefferson City area, grew up here. And she had approached me and said that she was interested in being on the board, so I had asked her to write to you guys.
I think she's filled out an application already. I think she's filled out an application.
She did.
Okay. Um, how long can people serve on your board?
They're appointed for three years and they serve until they, their term is up or until their, uh, rea-, until a reappointment is made or an appointment is made to replace them. Um, there's no term limit for board members. Most of the time, board members serve two, three-year terms. Some have served nine and some more than that even.
They can serve, they can serve forever, or?
Technically, they can, but it's always at the pleasure of the county commission.
Okay. I'm good with it.
Yep.
I move that we reappoint Dan Renfro and Thomas Quinn to the Cole County Residential Services Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bids and contracts, bid award 2018-06, cold milling and asphalt paving services.
And we received two bids in response to this. The recommendation is for the lowest bidder with availability.
Looking at these other ones is about it.
Um, so this is just for milling, really?
Yes, milling and if we need, if we need them to bring a paver in and do some paving for us.
Just some little patch stuff or something?
Yeah, some patching. Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I move that we award cold milling and asphalt paving services to the lowest bidder with availability.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2018-07, glass beads.
We're actually going to ask to postpone this one. He submitted the lowest bidder to MoDOT for testing, so we're going to be contingent on that. We'd like to just wait a week if possible.
Okay. So we don't need to take any action?
No.
Okay. 2018-08, signed materials.
The recommendation is to the lowest and best bid in each category with available material. You know, there's 176 line items, so they're kind of across the board there.
Who do we normally buy from?
Actually, um, Vulcan, Osborne.
Several of them?
Yes, we do.
Good enough. I'm good.
Yep.
Okay.
I move that we award signed materials to the lowest bidder with available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2018-09, paint materials.
Um, the lowest bid we received was from Sherwin-Williams. That is the recommendation contingent on successful MoDOT testing.
Is that bought locally, or?
Um, no, it's bought through the corporate.
They used to bid on a local level and that was turned over.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah.
I move that we award paint materials to Sherwin-Williams contingent on success- successful MoDOT testing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we do that with glass beads, too?
Well, we've had an issue with a low bid in the past not passing the testing, so in that case, we'd rather just wait to see how it comes back.
All right. Okay. 2018-10, asphalt materials.
And we received two bids. The recommendation is to the lowest bidder in each category with availability.
Pretty good bids. So since they're identical, you're just going to call and see who's available and who's not?
Usually what we do, yes.
I move that we award asphalt materials to the lowest bidder in each category with availability.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2018-11, pipes.
Pleased to say that we got bids for everything this year. Um, the recommendation is for the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Yeah.
I move that we award bid tab 2018-11, pipes, to the lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, unfinished business, abatement discussion of 13722 Jefferson Road, Russellville. Aaron, you want to?
I think we're having an esteemed guest.
We have. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate you, uh, allowing me to be here today on behalf of Jay Jackson. I apologize that he's not able to be here. His father is in the hospital and he himself is, is, is ill. Um, he's indicated he's done quite a bit of work on the property and he had asked, um, that we have some additional time to help clean that up. Some things that he's really trying to do is, um, do a control burn and of course he can't do that during school and so we've had a couple of bad weekends and he hasn't been able to do that. He has been working on some smaller burns on the property and so, I mean, he's gotten rid of a lot of bales. Um, I plan to go out there tomorrow and take a look at it and help, um, point out some, some issues for his property, um, but he does have, he, I believe he had hundreds of bales of cardboard out there and he says he's gotten rid of quite a bit of it and he has less than 100 bales at this point. Um, he's hired some people to pick up the yard that haven't been out there yet, but he has hired some people. Um, there have been scrappers that have come out to get some things. So there were some vehicles also mentioned, um, on the abatement issue. Those are over by a loading dock that there had to be some trees cut down and so the trees have been cut down and so they're making progress to be able to get the vehicles off of the loading dock and away from that property because we talked about getting those, um, vehicles taken care of and taken away. I think there's still workable vehicles. They just haven't run on his property or moved in a while, so we did, we talked about getting rid of those and he is working towards that. Um, we have, um, thank you to Commissioner Helcher. Um, we have been in touch with Leland Rehardt and I apologize, but I only have his, um, his acronyms. I don't know what his actual title is. Um, and so we've talked about utilizing his services to help clean up that property and so we're, I apologize for my, my delay in getting involved in this, um, in this, uh, issue, but I, I think that he's working on some, making some good progress and, and will continue to do that and so we respectfully request additional time to do so.
Yeah, Leland's with us always, Management District Board. We do have grants that sometimes can help take care of this, keeps it out of the landfill of state, so I know you all have been in touch with them and they've, I think they've made a good faith effort so far to try to do something, put a plan together, so I, do you know how much time that you all would really need to have something, or?
Ideally, you know, because spring is, or because of spring and his need to burn, I would, I would ask for at least 60 days just because we do have the weekends that have been so wet. If, if the commission suggests a shorter time, I, I will.
I'd rather let the residents try to take care of it themselves. I mean, we had the bids and they were all over the board, so. Chris, you were out there. I don't know if you've been out there to revisit it or anything to see what he's already done.
I haven't. Mike, have you been out there, or?
Joe and I went out there yesterday. The, uh, vehicles are freed up along the tree line, uh, towards the track. Uh, he's about a quarter way up the tree line and he has taken care of some of that cardboard. There is still quite a bit of cardboard, uh, back there. I would guess probably double the 100 bales, uh, still left based on what we saw back around the backside. Uh, the two big trash piles, uh, that were visible from the road as you were coming from Route C towards the school, uh, towards the track and in front of the house, uh, those have diminished considerably. You cannot see those from the right way. So, uh, yes, there has been some progress. There's still quite a ways to go and I have not been back, uh, back through the property with all the other scrap materials and the outbuildings and the stuff that was spilling out of the semi-trailers and, and other things and stored up underneath those semi-trailers. And I would be happy to go out. I've been trying to get ahold of him since October of last year and I know Department of Natural Resources would really like to speak with him also.
I don't really have a problem with an extension, um, Aaron, but I would like to see him focus on the cardboard. I mean, really, that's, that's the biggest issue. That's the most unsightly portion that's visible from the road. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's not necessarily visible from the road, but, um, obviously if we could see great progress towards that, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to another extension at some point, but keep in mind, all the stuff that was on the abatement isn't all the stuff that really needs to go. I mean, there's three tractor trailers full of junk that need to go. There's two temporary trailers that had stuff in it. I mean, I'd say every building out there is full of junk that really needs to be cleaned up. Now, I'm not sure we have the authority to tell you to clean it up, but I'm, my concern is, is that if those don't get cleaned up, all of a sudden here comes a trailer, this stuff just starts flowing out of it and now we're right back to where we were, so.
We, we spoke about those things. Unfortunately, I think there is a little bit of an emotional attachment to some of the things in those trailers as they are his mother's items, but we are working on that and I have spoken to him about getting rid of those.
Okay. So what, what kind of extension are you needing at this time, or?
I was hoping for 60 days if we could for now, if, if the commission would grant that and then that we could come revisit that in 60 days and talk about if the progress is being made.
I don't have a problem with, I mean, it took a while to get it like that. It's going to take a while to get it cleaned up and we can work with them. I think like Commissioner Shepherdley said, cardboard is probably the biggest thing because complaints we got was it was blowing on other people's properties and I think that's kind of where it stemmed from, so concentrate on that and then, you know, keep cleaning it up. I think it'd be a huge step forward.
Yeah, I think if we could get at least the cardboard cleaned up, if we give you the 60 days and we could get the cardboard cleaned up, especially the stuff that's visible, that would kind of be, in my opinion, a pretty good effort in that 60 days. Um, and so then obviously there's still other stuff that needs to be addressed, but if we could get that done, that'd be great and so.
Yeah.
You good with that?
I'm good with that.
I move that we grant a 60-day extension for the Russellville property, uh, at 13722 Jefferson Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we going to take action on the bid then? Because whenever their bid out is for 90 days and if you do the 60 days, it's already been that plus at least two weeks. And then if they're getting rid of stuff, I don't know if those would even be.
Right.
I don't think they, they valid anymore.
They're still valid.
Well, I mean, but it, with them cleaning up, it's.
I guess I'd like to leave them open.
Because they'll still be, yeah, we'll still be within the 90-day period at that point.
So, yeah, so I mean, obviously we're going to be checking on the site. If you're not making substantial progress, we may move forward with that within that because where are we? We're two weeks after the bid or three weeks?
Yeah, I guess we're probably three now, 60, so. And this is actually Bill Patterson. He was, um, a low bid. Is that a problem with, with orders you told in your pricing?
Part of our bid included recyclable materials, so I can now federal recycling. They're going to pay $60 a ton of cardboard. So that's, the quantity of cardboard decreases then, uh, next month.
Sure.
Have you been in touch with the owner? I mean, have you, do you know each other? Have you talked to him? I mean, is that something you'd still be interested in helping him out with?
I, I don't, but that would, I, I think we would probably be interested in chatting too.
I mean, I, maybe you all could work something out to where you still get something out of the deal and maybe helps him out, so.
Okay.
That would be all right?
Thank you.
And then if it comes down to it in 60 days, if y'all say, well, we're not going to honor it because we don't have the recyclables, then we just, we'll go from there. Appreciate y'all bidding it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Aaron. Okay.
Uh, Jim?
Do you need these?
Jim, you don't have to stay. You don't have to stay unless you just want to. It is pretty exciting.
It's the drama, the drama of it all.
Most excitement I've had since the birth of our son and child.
That's it, same thing to my group.
Is there a donation box?
Yeah, sure.
We're moving right along. Okay. Uh, abatement discussion of 2934 Landy Creek Road.
Yes, this is a Midell property.
Yeah.
I don't know if there are any of them here.
So they had that two-week extension?
They had the two-week extension of, I mean, I've got, this is what it looked like in 2015. I mean, this is a pretty good representation except the back area, uh, back up behind the house is definitely fuller. They've moved a lot of the stuff from the front yard to the backyard.
This is current?
That is not current. This is as of March of last year.
Okay.
And this is just the history through the, the case to this far. Um, Joe and I went out there on the 15th and the 26th and took photos and these are the photos of, the left slide is what the conditions were on the 15th after the last, the last meeting.
Are they in compliance?
No, these are, there's not a lot of change between the photos.
Have you talked to them or they need more time? Looked like they made quite a bit of progress in the front.
Yeah, and they've moved some of it to the back. I don't know how much they're getting rid of.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's the issue. I mean, I had given him some ways to store tires and he had done that during the May hearing, but he took the tires off the racks and took the tarps down and piled them up like this. He's put a lot of the stuff in an old boat that was in the front yard last time and is now in the back full of other items. He's hidden stuff back behind the motor home and that's pretty well the same from the 15th through the 26th. The right side of the property is definitely cleaner. I can't say that it's not, but, um, I, there's not a lot of difference between over the last two weeks and this photo.
Is that the back of the house there then?
This is the front.
Oh, that's the front. That you said from the road.
Yeah, I mean.
It's worse in two weeks than it was.
I mean, but go back a photo if you can there, mine. Oops, sorry.
Or is it delayed for something?
Okay, well, you're all are seeing is not what I'm seeing, so I apologize.
Okay.
It's a little delayed.
I mean, that looks a little better, but.
That right side does.
So, I guess back to Jeff's question, have you had contact with this, this lady?
Joe and I spoke with Jackie yesterday. Um, her, she says they've both been sick and have not had the opportunity to get out there like they should have. I, I'm just afraid if we don't go through with the abatement and get bids and, and get it cleaned up to the point where it's totally in compliance, we're going to be right back here. We had two cases last year where we went to the abatement process, promised additional, uh, continued progress, and I do have more photos of what, what it looked like in April. Or no, this is what it looked like in.
These are both.
On the 19th, at the end of the, the hearing, so.
Wow.
Okay, there is a big delay.
I can't believe you haven't been up there asking for a drone yet.
I was talking about.
We are talking.
That is on the wish.
Bill Fars got one they can use.
Did we combine? Because it would be really helpful situations like.
Yeah, Russellville, too, the property, because there's a lot there.
I knew I shouldn't have even asked, but I already talking about it in my defense.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem proceeding with the abatement, but I mean, I think it needs to be spelled out exactly what we need cleaned up. I mean, the cars need to either be licensed or gone and, I mean, I don't know how much of those other, other vehicles are the same way. I mean, I don't know how much we can regulate, I guess is my thing, but.
Right now, the only thing that's probably unlicensed is the truck in the front yard and, uh, I don't think there was any other, and the white car in the backyard.
Is motor home licensed?
I do not know. I have not been able to see that, but I know they can permanently license those.
I don't think it has moved in probably two years or more. It's, I don't remember it ever being out of spot. I mean, I'd be fine if they took everything and threw it into motor home and at least cleaned it up. It's not going into ditches and finding neighbors property.
Well, I'm sure that motor home's probably already full.
I'm ventured to say so.
He did get rid of the semi. He had a semi-trailer on there also.
So I'd say I'm in favor of moving forward with the abatement and trying to get bids on it.
I do, I mean, it's been a persistent thing here and we've worked with him several times and he was on the right track for a while and it's just, it's regressed and gotten worse again, so I don't think we have much of a choice.
So, I, he wasn't here last time, I guess because his, his wife said he was going through chemo, but that's, you know, where that you, then you get somebody else to clean it up, it's.
So do you need us to issue an abatement order then, or?
We've still got the abatement order unless, Jill, do we need to renew that, or since we?
We gave him an extension two weeks ago, so now the extension is expired, so.
Okay. So you just need direction to get bids on it then?
Okay.
We all good?
Absolutely.
Okay. There's your marching orders.
Thank you, sirs.
Yep.
Councils payable review.
I'd ask for approval of the council payable pending review.
Do we have mileage on that from MAC Board?
Yes.
Mine is? Okay. Fill mine out early.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay. Uh, subdivision street acceptance court orders.
Yeah, it's attached to the agenda.
We had several roads that were completed last year and then there was additionally some roads that had been completed previously. In the process on the subdivision acceptances, uh, the first year it goes into an interim period in which we allow snow on the roads, um, and then assuming everything is, is up to spec and there's no deficiencies and take the road in fully after that end of one year interim period. And so two, two roads that were in the interim period previously and are ready to accept fully are Markway Mills Court and Paradigm Drive. Now, the Paradigm Drive was done in, in two parts and actually two different developers. So those would be ready to accept, uh, final acceptance fully into the county system. And then the other roads, I'll go through the list. And then the other roads, I'll go through the list. Uh, these are all new ones that were done last year, either brand-new roads or, uh, final pieces or extensions of previously built roads that were unfinished. And that's Homeland Drive, um, Ryan Pringer's the developer there, and Weston Place and Darby Place. Um, Homeland is off of Pioneer Trail, uh, Pioneer Trail Drive. Uh, Weston Place and Darby Place is Pleasant Valley Subdivision off of Old Lowman Road. Jason Layle is the developer. Uh, Biltmore Drive and Thorn Grass Drive, these are new roads. Uh, one, actually, one is a new one, Thorn Grass off of Henwick Lane. And Biltmore is an extension of, uh, the road out there in Parkview Meadows. Uh, Jason Aki is the developer. Laura Drive, now Laura is a kind of an odd one. Uh, there's actually, I counted them, five different sections that this road was built in. Um, the last one is Eric Bryan, and he acquired that from the previous developer that had passed away. And he completed it, um, and so that now the road's fully done, and we're accepting the whole, the whole piece now on the interim basis. Um, and then Lashret Drive, another one that was, um, extended with, uh, with the cul-de-sac at the end. Uh, previous developer had sold it to Dave Burke, so he's now the developer of that. So, um, that's it, and, um, the plaits are included, uh, for reference, highlighted portions of the road. And I guess I'd just entertain any questions if you have any, um, about this. But the first two roads, Markway Mill and Paradigm, just for clarification, are fully coming into the county system, and the other ones are all on the one-year interim period.
Why is Paradigm owner twice?
Um, it, it's actually two different plaits. Um, the first part was built by...
But they're the same, it's the same drive?
Same road, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Two different plaits, two different owners. Pretty there. Technically, it's all under Scott Schaefer-Cutter now.
No, that's fine. It's the same road is all. I was curious, because I thought there was, you know, with the 911 stuff, you can't have the same road, so...
This is the most we've had in a while. Um, last year was pretty busy. It's nice to see some of these roads, roads get completed. And, um, we got a few kinda coming around this year possibly that we're working on. So some things are happening. I think there's a lot of movement out of the county. But it was nice to get all these done, and, uh, the ones that were previously unfinished, it was nice to get those done.
I don't have any more questions on them.
So, um, I know I talked to you a little bit. I mean... Just seems like the whole subdivision shouldn't be accepted until all the roads are accepted.
The, um, yes, and as I understand it, Larry might be able to answer a little bit better on the planning side of it. I think it's allowed to build a road in different plaits, basically different sections of the plat. And, uh, we'll take the road on an interim basis if it has a temporary turnaround. Um, it does lend itself to kind of a piecemeal approach to getting the roads done. I guess that's up to debate on whether that's good policy or not, but the way it is right now in the planning and subdivision regulation, the developer can't do this. Uh, the ones are, that it really kind of applied to, Homeland Drive was done that way. Really, that's the only one, and I think that was done. What I would say, the proper way of doing that, the others, uh, for example, Laura Drive, that was five different sections. And basically what happened is, uh, as, as, uh, the previous developer sold, uh, a lot or something like that, he extended the road, rode that much to cover that. Um, you know, I admit it might be something that, on the planning side of it, we need to review and see what the best policy moving forward is. From a road maintenance standpoint, it's not desirable to have a bunch of different sections of road built at different times. It's nice to have it all done at once, but understanding that it's a pretty big outlay to build, you know, a longer road. And sometimes on the developer's side of it, they can get a force done and then move on as they progress.
I would say you're kind of encouraging the development at that point, but at the same time, you can encourage them to finish the whole road and get it done, and we're not piecemealing it together and coming out there. And you don't know which road we're actually supposed to be on, you know? Pushing snow on some of it, is this our road or not? So I don't know. If it, if it causes problems, then I definitely think we need to take a look at it.
Well, I'm just con... I'm concerned, and, you know, I don't want to be any more restrictive than we have to. But at the same time, you know, we open up these sections and they may get developed, or they, they lag along, they don't get developed. We get mud on roads that we have to go out and clean up. A lot of times, the, the developer is long gone. And so now who's, who's responsible? And it's nobody. I mean, I've developed it, I've sold all the lots, I'm, I'm out of here. I moved on to the next one. And then we're stuck taking care of all these issues that aren't our issues that should be the developer or the property owner or anybody else. And, uh, you know, I just, I mean, you want to develop the whole subdivision, I don't think we should accept any of it until the subdivision's done. I mean, obviously, maybe an interim basis, but, I mean, I don't have a problem plowing the snow on it, but... For one, I don't think we should clean up any mud. If there's stormwater issues, I think somebody needs to take care of that other than us. And when the whole subdivision's complete, then, I mean, it's... Otherwise, there's, there's nobody that's accountable for the issues.
Now, I don't disagree, Chris, but, you know, that'll be a commissioned policy. You know, in the past, we've been instructed to accept it in that fashion. Like Eric said, you know, the piecemeal construction of these streets causes issues down the road, you know? The last section on it, you know, wasn't done until a lot later. We may be looking to have to try to overlay or do repairs on the first part that may be 10 or 15 years old. So, uh, we agree, uh, but it probably needs to have some thought put into it on how we do it. You know, there's, I know some counties require the developers to put up the bond money, uh, until the streets are done, you know? But again, that's putting restrictions on the development. You know, uh, we're more than willing to, you know, bring to you whatever, um, you'd like. We can do some research into it and see what... I can have Shannon, uh, take a look at some of the other counties, see what they're doing.
I'd, I'd add to what Larry said about the bond, putting up the bond. Paradigm Drive and Lashret are examples of a partially built road in which the, the developer that built it, not took off, but just wasn't there. He either sold it or whatever, didn't, wasn't the owner of the rest of it. And it was just kind of in no man's land. You know, we, we didn't maintain it because it wasn't our road. We didn't plow snow on it, but there was driveways off of it, there was houses being built on it. So not, not a good situation. So there needs to be a remedy for that. But yes, you know, I understand the whole, you know, we don't want to be too restrictive or put too much on the, on the developer to where we're not encouraging development. We don't want to be too far along the lines, but we don't want to add in a burden for us. Ultimately, you know, if this came to shove, we'd probably be responsible for that. If nothing ever happened. And I think we did, we ran into issues with plowing snow and people calling, "How can we not plow our road?" And it's hard to know what's what, and sometimes we went up it when we weren't supposed to if a different driver was out there, and it just, it creates a lot of issues. So definitely something we need to look at and figure out a resolution to those types of issues.
And I'm okay with the piecemeal, but I think, you know, with that, there's gotta be something that says, "Okay, if you don't complete it, you know, this is all interim." And then, you know, at some point, "If you don't complete it, we're not taking the road at all." Interim was good, no more snow removal, no more maintenance, you're, you're a private road. And even though you're built to county standards, we're not taking it.
We had one instance, I think it was over on Gateway, where we had two different developments. One came off the Rainbow Side, the other came off the other side, and they never connected. And then we actually went in back, well, it's been probably 20 years ago. We actually put that, that connection in, uh, you know? So, yeah, it creates some issues. I don't have a good, a good answer at this point to how we rectify that.
I think the biggest problem is building a partial part of, or part of a street within a plat.
Mm-hmm.
And not finishing it, because then it does, and not putting a turnaround. And then, I mean, those Lashret and Paradigm, we did not accept those even on the interim, because they didn't have a turnaround.
And maybe, maybe it's reclassifying that and it's gonna take some more thought, but maybe it's not an interim acceptance, but maybe it's an agreement that we're gonna do snow removal, but we, we won't accept it at all until it's all complete.
Well, if we, if we go somewhere out like that, then I just, we just about have to put some kind of notification on the plat itself or on, on the individual lots, because where we get into the fix is after everything the developer says he's done. It's not built to our standards. The people assume, or they've been told by the developer that, yeah, the county will take these streets over. Uh, we had an issue out off Route 10 in that one subdivision. Um, we begged the, the developer to let us inspect the streets while he's putting it in, and he didn't. Uh, and it came to, we went out and did some coring on it, and the landowners tried to ask us to take it over, and there wasn't sufficient depth on the concrete out there, so, you know, um... Again, uh...
Like I said, it's not a decision we could make today, I mean, but I just, I mean, I know I've had several issues with, with mud on streets and people complaining and, you know? Obviously, people own lots, but they not responsible for the subdivision itself, and so...
Right.
It gets to be confusing as to who's responsible for taking care of this and who's responsible for...
Well, and some of it with the Phase 2, you know, in, in the urban areas, some of this will be addressed with the Phase 2 stormwater regulations. Uh, you know, once we get to that point, we'll have some, some teeth there to where we, we can cure some of those problems. You know, whether that's part of, if the mud's coming off of a lot, we've got an ability, or even coming off a street that's just been graded edging and put in, we can go after the, the contractor, you know, on that. So, um, there's issues, growing pains that we're gonna have to go through to get to that point.
Well, at Lashret, we had those homeowners before us, you know, with, with stormwater, which wasn't from our streets, but I'm, I'm kinda...
Yep.
I kind of need to be really careful.
Yep.
Kind of heading off some of these issues now. Some of these, I mean, like, those are all pretty older, older developments. Or not older, but I'd say 10 years ago or so. Now, with the stormwater regulations that we're working on and acting, we're catching some of these things on the front side of it to where hopefully we don't have any of these.
Well, and some of the issues down there, that, you know, we'd probably have to lay back towards the developer or home builder. You know, if we had the stormwater regulations, what we're proposing, there'd be so much free board that'd have to be above the stream bank, you know, which would have helped those issues down there. At that time, we didn't have, you know, we can bring it up, and we've done it in the past, and, you know, to the contractors saying, "You really need to look at raising this house up just because of the, you know, the storm drainage." And sometimes they've done it, sometimes they haven't. You know, one of them I know, and the fact I can remember in the west end of town, that the house flooded severely. Um, and we, again, tried to get the contractor to raise it and didn't do it. We didn't have any basis in to force the issue with the stormwater rigs. Um, we'll have some teeth there that we can require.
So your, uh... Your report that you gave us says it's subdivision acceptance, but we're actually accepting streets.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the subdivision streets. It's not the subdivision, it's just the streets themselves.
Yeah, subdivision street acceptance, right.
Good? Other questions?
Well, they're all on interim, except for the first two, and those first two are, they're done, right?
Yeah.
And so when we take them on the interim, it doesn't mean we're gonna take them final.
No.
You mentioned something about people buying them. I mean, that's... By now, if you're buying a house, your first thing you should learn is buyer beware, so... I hear that a lot of times, waiting for us to pave their roads to you, so...
Yeah, but who's gonna take the heat when we take it as an interim and then we don't accept it? Yeah, it's gonna be us three.
Just for a reference, the city, they won't accept it until it's completely done. But they may accept it earlier than the one-year period, like what we do, everybody consider a year, which they're good and bad to both of them, I guess.
I don't know, I just think we need to think about it a little bit as we move forward, so... I move that we accept the recommendation for the subdivision street acceptance.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we can talk about these, just doing sections later on, maybe look into that.
Yep.
Everybody, get some sign.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
Did that cover all these you think are...
Yeah.
Keep moving ahead. Signing of the 2018-2019 DWI Highway Safety Grant Application.
I heard a train coming.
All right. We are asking for the same thing that we requested last year. We're requesting $8,440.25. This is for overtime reimbursement with fringe benefits with that. It also... No, this one doesn't. That's it.
It's just the application?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I move that we sign the 2018-2019 DWI Highway Safety Grant Application.
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of the 2018-2019 HMV Highway Safety Grant Application.
All three get to sign it again. Makes you feel important?
The HMV one, we are requesting $6,133.84. That's for overtime with fringe, and it also includes the LETSAC conference registration for two people.
What's that reimbursed for?
Overtime.
Overtime and what?
Fringe benefits.
Okay. What does HMV stand for?
Hazardous moving vehicles, or hazardous moving violations.
Okay. Right. I move that we sign the 2018-2019 HMV Highway Safety Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Purchase of computer software for the sheriff's office.
Yeah, this is something that Brian brought up to my attention, and I'm gonna let Brian talk about it. Brian?
Get out of here, it's for me.
Yeah.
So, as I've been going through the network discovery and stabilization effort that we started earlier last year, um, the firewall appliances that we currently use are going into life in August of this year. So I'd rather get ahead of that versus behind it, so... And the, when it comes to the funding, I think the sheriff has an idea on that. But, uh, anyway, we're gonna try to do that off of a cooperative, uh, contract with WWT Worldwide Technologies, so...
And so the, the final price is about $38,900. Our recommendation is that we take this money out of contingency, because it's something that we didn't know about whenever we went through our budgeting. Uh, this does include maintenance for this year and year only. Next year, uh, we will put our maintenance in, uh, our budget, and then Brian could put the maintenance on the, on the other side, on his, on his maintenance, on his budget.
So, pretty much what this is, is the gatekeeper to the county network.
And this is for all county systems, or...?
Sheriff and county. Yeah, the rest of the county. So all departments.
And I'll be honest, the main two I'm worried about is the Cole County Sheriff's Department and then, uh, the prosecuting attorneys. Department and then the prosecuting attorney's office because we share a lot of information in the networks on both of those. So.
So, Brian, what part of this is the support and what part is the hardware per se?
So.
Hardware software?
Down towards the, so line item one, that's actually the appliance itself.
Okay.
Line item two is support for the, so pretty much it's a software package you load that helps manage it.
Okay.
Line item three is support. There's different modules that are associated with the appliance. So there's threat defense, there's intrusion detection, there's malware and different things like that. That line M4 is the threat defense and malware. Line item five is 24 by 7 threat defense. And then the line item six is actually, we use a lot of VPN or VPN software to get into the network. Right now, we accomplish that through a software package called Cisco VPN Connect. So, this will be a much better way to do that. So that's a 50 user license on each appliance. And then the perpetual user licenses, pretty much all this is divided out into three years. And then obviously the onsite, line item eight is onsite configuration and maintenance or onsite installation configuration. And then the ongoing maintenance and support. So, it pretty much will be after year one, to the county side, it'll be $4,867.20. And then on the sheriff's side, it'll be that same amount. So.
Was that the 4867?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the support. So I probably told you a bunch of stuff other than just the.
Oh, you're all right. So after year one, it would be the 4867.
Correct.
To our side.
That's correct.
Okay. And what are we currently paying for, or do we have anything?
No, no maintenance or support on it other than just a hardware replacement. So, anytime that we have a firewall change or anything, we pay as we go.
I see. So it's on an as-needed basis?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we don't know what we've been paying yearly on something like that?
Yeah, so.
Roughly or?
Rough, I don't know that we've even paid a thousand bucks this year for firewall changes. But honestly, what happens is, is whenever we need support on it, since we don't have maintenance, we don't really have a priority as far as getting, you know, we're pretty much at availability at that point. So.
Take a number.
Yeah, more or less.
So with the firewall, a gatekeeper for all the networks?
Mm-hmm.
And the sheriff is willing to pay for it this year and then we'll share the maintenance going forward.
That, that's right. So like after, after year one, it'll be $4,867.20 to the county side. And then the sheriff will have his own.
So what did, you said something, I just want to clarify, but you said something that these were based on a three-year cost or?
Right. Yeah. So if you go through and you kind of look at, let's see. So on the, under line item three, smart net software support, there are six, there are six items there. Well, it's over like a three-year period. So, let's see if I can see that.
So all this doesn't happen all at once. It's going to be phased in over the three years or?
No, actually, this is, this will happen all at once. I'll have to get clarification on the smart net software support one year, but I was thinking that was six of those. But it could be just, it could be just for that year. I'll just, I'll have to get that one figured out.
Okay. But we don't think there's any cost in next year as far as other hardware items or software items for this?
Not for this, no.
Okay.
Yeah, not for this.
Just be the support.
The ongoing support, that's right.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you know, that, it's those things you have to kind of keep up to date.
It's just going to improve it though, right? So it's up to date and improved.
Right. So like if we go, so the problem with letting a device of this caliber go end of life is that there's absolutely zero support on it. And if it, if it breaks, it pretty much the entire county network is broken at that point too, until it's replaced or fixed. So I'd rather get ahead of that than be behind it. So.
This helps with a lot of our email servers and phone servers.
Oh, I could talk all day long about everything we've done lately, right?
Don't talk all day long. Give us a couple of points that make this a slam dunk.
Yeah, yes, so.
No, control your pit.
So anyway, so, so, yeah, so early on, earlier this year, you know, we had the email outage there for a few days. And so back then I developed a strategic plan that, and to kind of let everybody know what was going on. But we went through and we purchased new hardware platforms and software services to include anti-malware, spam and viruses. And then also the email continuity product, which should these newer platforms ever go down, which would be highly unlikely, that we would still have continuity. Our email will still be caught out there in the cloud. So, so anyway, with that in place, we went through and we also upgraded the Cisco core switches. And all this has been done over the past two months. And because all, like, when it comes to the Cisco devices, they pretty much have a five-year shelf life on them. And at that point, they're going to have to be replaced because they're no longer are supported. So, so anyway, so this is truly like kind of tagging in on the end of that whole stabilization effort. And so when I was talking to the sheriff about it and I said, hey, this is going to be coming up, you know, in August, I got to thinking that even though we've done quite a bit here lately over time, it's probably would be a good idea to get ahead of this versus, you know, react to it. And.
Server threat is increasing even more.
Yeah. And it's just, it's one of those things where you want to pretty much have the best out there in order to keep, make sure you put your best ever forward to keep anything from happening. So.
I'm fine with it.
Good.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind if we had more email outages or once in a while.
That was kind of nice over the weekend.
You guys aren't the first ones that said that.
Okay. No, it's, I'm good with it. Thanks, Sheriff. Putting a bill on the extras.
Kudos to your staff, Brian. Tell them.
I tell you, my team has done wonders lately.
Breaking arms. Oh, let's not get him started.
IT people are really honestly, they're kind of like, they're supposed to be seen and not heard. So.
It's not really working for us, is it?
You get what you get.
Will there be a contract?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a contract.
So what would you call this in general?
As far as firewall appliance?
Firewall appliance and support?
Yes, right.
Okay. I move that we approve the purchase and support of the firewall appliance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get the paperwork over to you guys.
It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I get to read this. Repeal this order. An order authorizing an extension of the.
You got to make a motion to do that. Yeah, you got to move it. You can't just say repeal.
That's why I'm letting you do it. I'm just second.
Okay. Take a motion.
No, you have to, you have to do, you have to move.
I move that we repeal this order.
You got to read it all.
An order authorizing an extension of the maturity date and increase in interest rate of the county's limited general obligation temporary note, Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project Series 2016 with Mid-America Bank and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Second.
Any discussion?
Why are we doing this?
Because Debbie said so.
The newspaper wants to know.
Because we approved the wrong one.
I printed, I printed both of them and I handed you the wrong one.
Just house cleaning.
All right. That's all I got.
Okay.
Call the vote, Dad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve this order. An order authorizing an extension of the maturity date and increase in interest rate and increase of the principal amount of the county's limited general obligation temporary note, Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project Series 2016 with Mid-America Bank and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Let's, let's move Ren's leg down and take care of some of these others. Sorry, Jeff.
Discussion of a new health building project.
Is that all on the email?
Yes. Well, basically, I just asked you guys some questions, came up with bidding of the project that currently we're under bid for carpeting, not only for that department, for other departments. And we were looking at the timing for that. And then Greg had mentioned the HVAC and that work will entail getting up in the ceiling. So we didn't want all that stuff to drop on the new carpet. And then there was also talk about painting. So we just kind of wanted to get a timeline and things that really just an approval to go out for the HVAC now. And so we can get this stuff timed out by the state.
So Greg, are we going to redo all the HVAC or just one side or just the controls or?
Upgrade, upgrade the given pneumatic controls that need to be taken away, upgrade it to the digital controls. In turn, you will have to replace some fittings and other things. So, you know, potential dropping stuff on the floor will be there. Here's the problem. We don't have that building yet, so I can't get people in above the ceilings while they're still working. Trying to find a set of prints for that building has been nearly pulling your hair out. I have contacted one of the architect firms that did some of the drawings in Kansas City and they do have some of the prints for the mechanical stuff. How accurate it is, I don't know.
Why can't we get in there?
They're shutting operational.
Are they open 24 hours a day?
No.
They're waiting after they close.
They're letting us in to do the flooring bid.
I mean, just to go look at, you just need to look at it to bid it, right? So.
I would have to get above ceiling everywhere. I don't know where any of that equipment is.
So can we get in, like Jeff said, can we get in there after hours or before hours or Saturdays or something to?
They've been very accommodating when we've asked for that. We're doing the flooring bid after hours next Tuesday night. I don't think it would be a problem.
I agree. I think we ought to at least bid to HVAC and see where that's going to come in at. And then we'll have to coordinate. Ideally, that's probably not the whole building. So, I mean, there may be some coordination where they could start on flooring on one part of the building and they could start on HVAC on the other part of the building and, you know.
I mean, I've bid jobs before. We got to get into spots in the attic too. And you got to go through the bedroom, through the attic or to the closet to get through this tiny hole. And it is a pain. But you're not going to bid it without seeing it. So if they got to crawl up in there, we got to do it after hours. I would try to do that. Either that or we might as well put it on hold and wait until it's broken to fix it.
Well, can we also contact the company that services their HVAC now, people that they know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Surely they've seen it, got an idea. I'm fine with looking at it and get an idea on what's going to cost to replace it. I mean, we had it on a capo for like 60 grand. Is that, if you look at doing all that, is that going to cover it?
It'd be close.
Okay. That's a big system. I'm just worried about that even being close enough to touch it. So.
I mean, and then what are we talking about, painting? Are we talking about painting everything or?
We would like to paint everything, but we would like to do it with volunteers and staff. We would like to not contract that out to save money. If you're okay with that.
So basically we're buying, painting some supplies.
And we would want to do that obviously before the floor is installed.
Sure. So is drop ceiling, hard ceiling? I mean.
Both.
Both. So are we replacing the vinyl base too or is that part of the bid?
Yesterday when I was removing, the base is chewed up, the flooring is chewed up, all the doors are chewed up. The jams, they all need to be prepared around, excuse me, around the doors. I think, you know.
Okay. That's fine. That's what we're bidding, right?
Yeah. You know, when is the date they think they're might be moving out?
May.
May?
I'll probably land more Wednesday.
I mean, if they're out of there in May, we still have time to bid stuff later this year. And if they don't get in there until January 1, we have a grant open January 1.
Well, let's, let's try to get ahead of it and get a bid so that people can do the work this summer.
My point is to get the bids out.
Right.
Yeah, I'm quickly running out of time.
So, let's, just make it happen. I mean, get people in there, get, let's get a bid. Try to get some plans, Greg. I mean, if you got problems, let us know and we'll, we can always push it back, but let's try to get it done now.
I agree. I mean, I'll talk to the people that do the maintenance on it now and see what they know about it.
I'll email the facilities director and get.
I already know who it is. It's an individual company that we've already discussed, Mr. Shapley.
Like I said, if you have problems, let me know. I'll make a call.
We love that. That part of our name.
We'll move forward on that. And I'm assuming you guys are okay with the volunteer work on the paint then?
Yeah.
And then the timing of the carpet, we'll add that bid to my schedule.
To fix the color stuff.
We're going to paint, we're going to paint my wall like we did over at Clurk's.
I mean, you can paint it like my wall. I'm fine with that. But I want to prove it first. I don't.
We'll probably do something.
Hot pink in there.
I do, we're talking paint though. Greg had a paint job over at the printer center and Bernie Fekstall paid for the paint. So I want to thank, thank Bernie for doing that. Maybe he'll buy the paint for them.
Paid for the paint for what?
They did some painting over at the printer center and Bernie paid for the paint.
Okay, come on, let's move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Investment services discussion.
Thank you.
Hi, Derek.
See, I've been county treasurer for nine years and a little more than nine years. And in all these years, I haven't really had the opportunity to need to go out and invest the county's excess cash. And part of the reason is the depression, the depression, the recession, the Great Recession in 2009 took interest rates all the way down into the basement. We've been there since about 2015. Rates now are slowly starting to tick up. And the depository agreement that we had with our depository prior to the last year or so has had given us a rather attractive rate of return on our demand deposits, about 2.55% on the first 15 million. And we had another 15 or so million, so it netted out to about 1.3, 1.4%, which if any of you all remember the last, the last eight years, that's a, that is a very, very competitive rate, almost unheard of in 2010, 11. rate, almost unheard of in 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14. So we were very fortunate, and we're fortunate again now, now that rates are ticking up. We've all worked together, I wanna thank the members of the investment committee that you all appointed, and we got the investment policy before you all, you all approved it in October, I believe, of last year. And so now we've got all the ducks in a row, rates have actually gone up 10 or 15 basis points just in the last two weeks. Part of it is because of who sits in the White House and the things that he has said about the economy, some of it is because inflation is starting to increase finally after years of being stagnant, a number of other reasons, but, so my office is here today to request that you all approve approximately $5 million in our excess funds, in our county funds, that are excess for investment in U.S. Treasuries. So really, we're here to talk about the amount of money that you all are comfortable with We've talked at length with the auditor, and with the finance officer, and with the presiding commissioner, we feel comfortable that the $5 million represents something that won't interfere with our cash flows to pay our daily bills and any capital projects that you all have slated for the next year, or two, or three. And having said that, right now, we have approximately, I think, 38 and a half million in the bank. Our depository agreement with Central Bank calls for a return on the first 30 million in demand deposits of the three-month treasury plus 16 basis points. The next 30 to 34 million gets the three-month minus 15 basis points, and anything over 34 million earns only what Central Bank calls their overnight rate, which right now is .25. So, obviously, anything over 30 million, we get dinged for, 30 to 34 gets dinged minus 15 basis points, which is .15%. Anything over 34 is just money that we're getting a less than modest amount of investment on. So if you look at the handout that I gave you, let's see, right now, we're earning .25 on anything over 34 million. If we go out just three months, we would earn approximately, now, these are the Fed Funds Rate, so these, these change daily. Right now, we're at, but you can see through the month of, let's see, I've got just a second. So going now, three months, we're at a percent, 1.64. Six months, if you look down there, February 23rd is the latest, all the way up to, well, a year is 2.02, two years is 2.25, 2.39 for three years. So obviously, all those are far more attractive than the .25 that we're getting. So we're going to, I know some of you have already met with Central Bank, and so I don't know if I need to get anymore, need to get into any more detail. Certainly, you know, happy to answer any questions anybody has, but the three, how we propose to do this is, everybody seems to in agreement that 3 million goes out longer term. I think in the discussions you might have had with Central Bank, that it was a year, year and a half, and two-year, what's called a laddered portfolio, so that money in the first tranche, as it matures, can be reinvested, hopefully, in a comparable rate, or even a higher rate, since we're in a, in a rate-raising environment right now. So, longer term, I think, in the past, I've talked about a one, two, three-year laddered portfolio, because rates are going up noticeably quicker than, than in the past, it might behoove us to go to a shorter term. So I'm perfectly fine with one, one and a half to two-year, but that still leaves excess cash over 34 million, so we're proposing to take an additional 2 million and put it in a very short treasury bill of only three months. That way, we don't run up against any capital layouts that you all suddenly need, for whatever reason, or if there's any sort of cash flow issue. That 2 million is available in three months, and I can come back to you all in three months and talk to you again about what, where we stand at that time. So, I'll answer any questions if you have them.
So I guess I'm a little confused, you're talking .25, and then I thought you said that Central Bank was paying us the three-month treasury plus 16 basis points.
On the first 30 million, so imagine we have, let's say...
So that's 1.8 roughly, as of today, or the 23rd, right?
Right. Well, wait, wait, wait. What number are you starting with, I'm sorry?
Well, three-month treasury is 1.64, is that not right, or am I looking at something different?
No, you're looking at it correctly, yes. So you're saying, what they do is they average this at the end of February...
So it's the three-month average, okay.
They'll, they'll do an average...
Plus 16 basis points.
Plus 16 basis points.
Okay, so, that's, that's a number, you know, 1, 1.7, 1.8, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Right.
So where's the, the .25 is what we're getting on the remainder?
No, the remainder then is split two ways, anything above 30, but going to 34 and stopping that, 30 to 34 earns the same three-month treasury note that you just saw, minus 15 basis points.
Okay.
Yeah. Which we would like to address at some point, but really, at the, the third tranche, which is anything over 34, gets what they call their overnight rate, or repo rate, which is .25, and that's what we wanted to address last year, and we're to that point now, thanks to everybody who's...
Anything over 34 million gets the .25%.
Exactly, right. Right.
I think it's a good start, I'm okay with the, the 3 million, I don't know about the 2 million for 90 days, I don't know if we're gonna do 30 days.
Pardon me? Yeah, you can do a, you can do a 30-day...
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's, you just don't know when something unexpected is going to arise, where, God forbid, you know, we would need that money.
So is your, is your proposal basically taking that excess fund and investing it in basically something similar to this?
Correct, U.S. Treasuries, which are the safest, least risky of all investments.
So these would be the yields that we would expect to get on that money?
Pardon me?
These would be the yields that we would expect to get on that excess money that we're talking about?
You're reading out, is that the rates curve?
And actually, that's two days old, it's already gone up since then, but yes, that, approximately, yes.
So instead of making .25% on anything over 34 million, we'd be making 1.3 to 2, or somewhere in that neighborhood?
Right, in that instance, we're not averaging, in that, over the whole month, we're just capturing the latest rate.
Sure, but I mean, I'm just giving you a range, 'cause it's gonna be up and down, and...
Right. Well, I will say this, that it, it will, it will be going up, the Federal Reserve has penciled in three rate raises in 2018, two rate raises in 2019, and those are a quarter percent each. There's an additional 2018 rate that they're now talking about, in the minutes of the last Federal Reserve meeting, it looks possibly there might be four rate raises. So the market bakes in these rates that we see now, what they anticipate. They anticipate a March increase, it's almost like a 99% certainty that the March quarter percent raise, so that's probably already baked in here. But when you get then to subsequent raises later in the year, those are not baked in yet, they're not part of what the market is anticipating and reflected in their rate. So, that's why I suggested going out three months, one month is fine, because rates will be higher in 30 days, but as long as we got 38-some million in the bank right now, and having talked to the auditor and the finance officer, we feel comfortable with 2 million for three months, and capture this rate right now, so.
Well, not all that, those millions are our money, really.
No, but I have a fiduciary responsibility, since they sit with the county treasurer anyway, to make sure that they get the highest return, at the same time that I keep their funds liquid.
Well, I think this is, I think this is very good, it's, you know, it's, it was interesting, 'cause in Saturday's Wall Street Journal, Warren Buffett has hundreds of billions of dollars in treasury bills. It's a good place to park, to kind of park your money, where, you know, now he's talking about buying airlines.
Right. Well, for those of us in this room, to read an article about Warren Buffett having $100 billion in U.S. Treasuries, it speaks to one thing, which is, an investor of his fortitude is saying that he doesn't have that much trust in the market to keep the money there, and he keeps it liquid in, in, in U.S. Treasury. I think it speaks to the safety of U.S. Treasuries to have somebody who keeps $100 billion in cash. Of course, it also speaks to how wealthy he is, too, so.
$100...
So would a motion of 3 million being invested for one year?
Well, excuse me, the commission approves the amount. The duration is something that I am responsible for in talking with the trading desk at Central Bank. The commission, I'm supposed to make the decision on the investment instrument, and, but of course, I've been very transparent in telling you, especially since you all have met with Central Bank, what I intend to invest it in. But whether it's one, one and a half, and two, or even shorter duration, that's something that Les and I will work on, and I'll decide, you know, shortly.
Well, there was an email that said that I was against the whole thing, I wasn't against the whole thing.
Yes.
I think it's good for us to invest the money, but I had a problem with who, and how much, and we don't know that. And right now, I'm hearing that, we're just gonna give you 5 million, you get to decide how to invest it, I disagree with that. I think that we should have a say in it, we're the ones that are gonna take the heat if it's not in a good spot, and the way we've worked together, I think at this point, we've had between 3 and 5 million, or even down to 1 million at one point, we thought about doing. The whole investment committee should be a part of it.
Well, they are, and I appreciate that, and I understood that...
But it ultimately should come down to us making a decision.
Well, you all passed the investment policy, and if I can read portions of it to you, I...
I've seen it, I don't need you to read it.
Well, I'm gonna read it to the other two, then.
Oh, good.
Management of, it says that the, in, on page three, under scope, it says the county commission will appoint an investment committee to be involved with the amount of county funds to be invested outside of the depository agreement and the timeframe of those investments. They are to be involved, okay? Further down in legality, it says the county treasurer will invest the county's excess funds only within the legal guidelines set forth constitution laws of Missouri. You're not handing it over to me, letting me decide, as if I can stick it wherever I want. You all have already had your say, and told me specifically the instruments that I may invest in, and the instruments I may not invest in. You all further have had say, and have told me how long, the duration, those instruments must be, no longer than three years. And if you'll let me read one more key paragraph, delegation of authority, you all approve the policy that says authority to manage the investment program is granted to the county treasurer. Most people understand management involves those decisions from beginning to end with the involvement of the other key parties, the investment committee members, who I've listened to very carefully, and you all, who I'm going to listen to very carefully now. I'm also being very transparent about what I would invest in, how long I would invest in, but the market, you know, ultimately will help me and the person at the trading desk decide at any given moment, when you pull the trigger, where those monies go and for how long. Responsibility for the operation of the investment program is hereby delegated to the investment official, which is the county treasurer. It doesn't say that the responsibility is of the commission, it's the, I, I am responsible for what I do with that money, and what happens to that money, and I take that responsibility very seriously, and I have a fiduciary responsibility as well. And the last thing it says is the investment official shall be responsible for all transactions undertaken. So hopefully, that clarifies that, that of course you all decide how much money gets invested, and you all have a very big say with this elected official about how that's invested.
If I wanna say, though, that the, we're gonna put, okay, say we take the 5 million, and we do the 3 million in a long-term laddered portfolio, and we do the 2 million, 2 million in a short-term, three-month, or even do one month. Basically, what we tell you to do with, you don't have to, you can go to their desk and go, huh, I decided I wanna do this today, and maybe put all 5 million in the long-term. And that's what I don't agree with.
Right.
But I wanna do it as a group, we all decide, and, you know, you are the manager, you're the investment official, but I think we need to have, you know, even as a group, have the ultimate last say in it. So, that's where I'm at with it. It comes down to the commission being in charge of it, I think.
And that's, that's certainly not...
I'm just one, though.
Let's put it this way, I mean, the elect, the voters of Cole County have entrusted with you and the other two commissioners, great deals of responsibility within the government, they trust you, and you take their wishes into account on an array of things, and it's no different with my office. You all, and everybody else with the county, hopefully, would trust my ability to, one, be transparent, two, make sure I don't invest in anything I'm not supposed to, three, that I adhere to the principles of investing that everybody is supposed to abide by, which is safety, liquidity, and yield. Yield being the least important, safety being the most important, being liquid, being able to get those monies out of the investment being, you know, still more important than yield. So I would say that, you know, if you feel entrusted, please pivot for a moment and consider my office, this is what I do. I have a Series 7 licensing exam with FINRA, I won't get into all that, but I know what I'm doing, and I'm working with very trusted people over at our depository, and I've consulted very carefully with the investment committee members, as I'm doing with you, but, I mean, if I can't allay that lack of trust, you know, there's not, not much more I can do than that. So hopefully, that has some traction with you, Jeff.
I just, if we decide we wanna do it with, like I said, what we decided right here was the 3 million in the laddered portfolio, and then 1 million, or 2 million, and 1% or 3%, then that should be the direction that it goes. If we're gonna say, okay, well, we will take another million and entrust you to do it, now you see best, and then in a year, or whatever, you can either point at us and go, see, I did better, and have fun with it, make it a contest, but I'm, I think what we have is a safe plan here, and I'd like to stick to it, I don't necessarily wanna just give free range for somebody else to decide what they're gonna do with the laddering.
I'm not, I'm not, not sticking to it, I'm suggesting that since this is the first time in nine years that I've come before you all, that we get it right the first time, let's adhere to the policy that you all approved, which was to delegate the authority of investing the monies to the county treasurer. It's not your decision on the instruments and the duration, your own policy's clear about that.
Okay, then...
What's clear, what's clear is, is that you all have the say on...
We can go and do it. What we gotta do is change the investment policy.
Well, the investment committee, basically, I think, was okay with this, so, I mean, in that respect, they, they, you know, you don't just take 5 million and...
Of course not.
Stick it anywhere, I mean, you know, it's...
Of course not. I would hope you all would have...
So I'm, and I'm, I think, but I agree with Jeff in the, but I think-
Can I interrupt?
As we get more comfortable with this, I think it'll be easier.
Well, let me point this out, that if you all, next time you're all at a C-CAM meeting and talk to your fellow commissioners, you might be surprised how many of them rely on their treasurers and are not involved in the specifics of duration and the investment vehicle that's used. They, they rely on their treasurers, and I'll say one other thing, that I've talked to three different attorneys who have made it very clear to me, that county treasurers in the state of Missouri are responsible and in charge of investing excess cash. It's not a legal responsibility of the commission, nor is it a decision-making authority that rests with the commission. If a treasurer wishes to, you know, forego that or to allow the commission say in it, for example, somebody like me, I'm happy to listen to you all. I want to listen to you all, just as I've listened to the auditor and the finance officer. That's, to me, that's my responsibility.
So how much did the attorney say that you can invest without our permission? Any overage money or whatever is what they said?
Is that a trick question?
Said the treasurers can invest any extra money that we have.
They could.
And whose mind is it extra money? Maybe it's not extra money. Maybe we've got plans for it. I mean, we-
Well, and that's why we need some say.
There's three of us up here that-
Because there is, you know, there is, there are projects that are, you know, we're always moving ahead, so-
And you all have that say.
And so we need to be able to tell you that, no, right now, we need to do more in the short term.
Right.
Because we're gonna need this money, so, because you don't know that. And that's, you know, but again, I think the investment committee-
And I've taken that, I've taken that, I've taken that into account and told you what I'm going to do with the money. What I'm, what I'm trying to get to is Debbie just finished, started to phrase a motion, and I wanted to make sure that, even though we're all in agreement about the longer-term, year, year and a half, and two years, and a short term, which is either, you know, one to three months, that the amount of money is what the commission approves, and that it is a trusting relationship between the treasurer and the commission, that with my fiduciary responsibility, having listened to the investment committee members and yourselves, that I do what I say that I'm going to do. But again, this is the first time in nine years that we've sat together and done this, and the motion needs to be the amount of money you're authorizing the delegate, excuse me?
She sneezed, I said, bless her.
Yeah, okay.
The amount of money and-
The amount of money.
I thought you read in there that they get to determine a timeframe, too.
No, but it says, "The county commission will appoint an investment committee to be involved with the amount of county funds to be invested outside of the depository agreement and the timeframe of those investments." I'm saying that it says to be involved. The ultimate delegation of authority and responsibility is with me. The investment committee members are not responsible for this. I am. You all are not responsible as commissioners. I am. That's why you all, I just wanna set precedents correctly, and that is that you all are supposed to tell me how much can be invested, and I'm supposed to be very forthcoming and transparent with you all about how long it's to be invested and in what instrument. And we're all in agreement on that.
Just that how long is what bothers me, because only them know the projects to come.
Revised our investment.
I think they can, they can make their motion however they wanna make their motion. They have a responsibility for ensuring that the money isn't tied up, so if we end up having an emergency, so.
Then they would direct me to liquidate-
I mean, basically, by that policy, you can basically do a mechanical function. I mean, if they want to frame their motion in a really tight manner, they can do it, because you can't appropriate that money without their say anyway.
Of course not. I've not, and I've not suggested anything otherwise.
I think the plan is a great idea, Eric.
So do I.
I'm not arguing that part.
Right.
It's just, I'm not giving 5 million, and then you can go and change how you're gonna do it. I think we all sat together, this was something that, it sounds like everybody came up with the 5 million, 'cause I've heard anywhere from 1 to 3 to 5, and so it was something that, is that what you all had decided, the-
The last two was brought up yesterday, and it's a very, very short term, anywhere from 30 to three months. It was brought up at the last minute, the 3 million over the next two years was talked about a little bit more.
I think we need to, we need to approach it cautiously, but I think it's, I think it is, it's, this is very good. It's very good.
Yes.
But, you know, going back to that, it wasn't that long ago, we had a treasurer with an eighth-grade education. You know, he wouldn't have come and said, I wanna invest 5 million or something like that, so. It's, it, you know, to say this is what the treasurer's supposed to do.
The policy speaks for itself, the county councillor's comments notwithstanding, which I appreciate her, her comments, if that's how you all want to phrase it. I would just ask that, again, after nine years, please let us start off on the right foot and realize you all have the ultimate authority and responsibility for releasing those dollars into my investment care, and then I am responsible for what happens after that. And I've made it very clear in the minutes, hopefully, so far, in speaking publicly, I intend to invest longer-term, based on what you all came up with and I came up with as well, talking to Les, Ren at Central Bank, in one, one and a half, and a two-year laddered portfolio of $3 million. And additionally, with the input from the investment committee, $2 million in a much shorter investment period of one to three months. And if you would like to limit me to one month in the form of a motion, according to the county councillor, you're welcome to do that. I would hope you would let me and Les, or whoever's at the trading desk that I talked with, look at the rates that day. And I will also say this, at the very last minute, I will pivot and talk to the county auditor and the finance officer one more time before the transaction is executed, and make sure that it's to her liking, to their liking, as fellow investment committee members and chief budget officer and finance officer. So I'm not gonna get your approval to invest it, and then you're not gonna hear from me until my report. I'll be in communication, as I always am on stuff like this, with the auditor, with the finance officer, and typically, Sam, I tend to talk to you, not to be exclusionary of the other two. It's just, I was a commissioner, there's three of you, I'm not always easy to hold of you. You seem to be a little easier for me, and so that's how it just has played out, and I would continue to do that, so. And hopefully, you all would trust, trust that process.
So now you said this amount just came up yesterday, the 5 million?
The 2 million in the short term, the extra 2 million in the short term.
Okay, so now we found 2 million more that we can put in it, or what? I'd like to hear where it came from. I mean, what, where are you all going off? Who's long-term plan?
Well, look, our-
I can't take people's money, but if it were longer than a year, I may not be, you may not be here in a year, you may not be here next year, Sam.
I know.
Well, Jeff, let me-
It's a real, it's a real possibility. Well, unless somebody files against you, but.
Let me explain how we arrived at the numbers. When we first started talking about it, we had 39 or so million in the bank, and we know anything over 30, we need to invest other, where, another place. I hope you would agree with that, that .25 is simply not-
And we went from 34.
I think I said 30. I did.
Oh.
Yeah, because 30 to 34, you're getting dinged 15 basis points. So, anyway, if there's 39 million approximately, this is how we started out. We came up with a figure of approximately 5 million, and Debbie, excuse me, the finance officer and the auditor came back with us that it was clear about, about 3 million, they felt very comfortable with going out longer-term. And as long as rates are so high, I thought perhaps we could then go very short-term, 30 days, I was thinking three months, and take that additional 2 million that clearly we're not gonna need in the next three months, make sure everybody felt comfortable with it, and turned and asked the auditor yesterday, and talked to the finance officer yesterday, and the presiding commissioner yesterday. So that's, that's how we got from 3 to 5. My office was always advocating 5. It's not we've gone from 1 to 3 to 5. Maybe from your perspective, which I respect, that's how it played out. From our perspective, looking at the monies that were available, we felt comfortable with 5 million, and I think we're to that point now. Between the laddered portfolio and the short-term investment, I think that that's a, it's a very good, a very good plan, very safe plan, certainly better than .25. So that's how we arrived at 5. And if either the auditor or the finance officer, you know, wish to change their minds, I mean, from yesterday, that's fine. I'm not gonna get upset if something is changed that we don't know about, but I think I'm representing to you and the commissioners pretty fairly, you know, how we got to this point, from my perspective, so, the 5 million.
So Chris, and I'm putting 2 million in like 30 days.
I think 30 days would be better than three months.
Yeah, I think, I think.
We do have the money, we have set aside for the health department building that is sitting in the bank until the community health center is done.
But if we do it the way that's being proposed, you can take all 5 million and put it in three years.
I'm not gonna do that.
You don't have a damn word to say about it, it's the way you're saying it. And I disagree with that. That's why I said I was against it. I'm into investing it and getting the bank bar buck, and, you know, it is our, it's our fiduciary responsibility as well, and, you know, all of ours as the county leaders. So I agree with it if we do this plan, but if we give whoever the investment official is, we give them free rein, I won't vote for it. And that's just where I'm at right now. So we can keep talking about it, if you wanna call a voter, make a motion. Chris, you haven't had a chance to say your piece, I guess, yet, so.
I'm just listening to you two. In nine years, this treasurer and his eight years as county commissioner, I don't think there's a single incident of me ever not following through with my word or being somebody that, I'm not suggesting you're trying to impugn my ethics, but, I mean, we've gotten to the point now in your commentary that there's some question about what I might actually do.
No, don't go there about it to me trusting you. I mean, you could be gone tomorrow, too, and if somebody get appointed to your position and didn't agree with the way we wanted to do it, all of a sudden, they've got free rein and we don't. So it's, it's nothing about trusting you, Eric. This is, and you know what, you've been on this side of the desk.
You all would approve 0 dollars. If you didn't trust my successor, then you simply appropriate 0 dollars to be invested if you feel that uncomfortable. And then you all change the policy, and you all become stewards of, and responsible for investing. The way we have it set up right now with your own investment committee members and me required to come before you all on a regular basis and present a monthly investment report and work only through our depository and get no other bids from any other financial house in the United States, I'm fine with that, and I think it's gonna work out wonderfully. I feel very comfortable.
Risk will play it on the other foot. If you find a different way that you think is better to invest it, you come to a commission meeting and say, hey, I think we ought to do this one in a two- or three-year term. Are you okay with that and will you approve it? And, okay, sure.
If it's not in here, I can't invest it.
Or you don't trust us to know what we're doing, I guess.
I've never said that.
I know, it goes both ways.
Right.
It's nothing to trust. You've been on this side of the bench as well. You know that there's a little bit of the control thing as well. You still wanna have control over it. I have a problem with you doing it the way we talked about today, and if something changes in the next 30 days that you think's gonna be a better way to do it, I just think it needs to be by our approval, so. All right, I'll shut up now. Well, I've said that before.
Maybe I could make a suggestion that Chris and Sam and you might agree with. Motion today for 5 million to be invested per the investment authority, investment official, and see, and, excuse me, I can come before you, put a request to be on the agenda, when I have worked out the details on the transactions with the trading desk, and come to you all and tell you, before I make that execution, I can sit before you all again, tell you what I'm going to do. And you all can put the kibosh on it or not, but that, that way, we don't get to the business of you all always opining, not opining, you get free to opine, of course, but not always in the business of setting duration and setting the instrument. Really, that defaults to the person who has the responsibility to manage and to make those So what I'm saying is a two-step process. Go ahead and make your motion today to approve 5 million, understanding that the minutes are clear about how I'm saying, with the input of the investment committee members and you all, how and where that money should be invested, and then I can come back and show you the transactional documents that I abided by, what we all agreed with, or I can come back before you all and show you, you know, literally moments before I go and get that done with the trading desk, before I execute it, that you all see what I'm doing. So, I mean, that's, I think that would be the-
I mean, that's kinda where I was at with it, with what you brought about the 3 million in the laddered portfolio and then the 2 million in the short-term, and, I mean, we just talked about it between three months and one month. Bring a plan to us. Once we agree, we can execute your plans.
Yeah, if you say, let's take a million-
I don't have a problem with that.
Go to Las Vegas and, and, you know, we'll shoot craps, you know, unless you, you know, but-
Well, I'm telling you all now how I'm going to do it.
Yeah.
I've even pivoted from three months down to one month. We can do a 3 million laddered portfolio of a year, year and a half, and two years. Do 2 million in a very short 30-day treasury bill.
What's wrong with putting all of that in the motion?
As the county councillor said, there's nothing wrong with that. I just wanted to have the commission and the treasurer understand that their authority and I have to obey, you know, is the amount. My responsibility, on the other hand, according to all the things that are laid out here, is what instruments and the duration, how long. And I'm showing very clearly that I'm listening to everybody in the room, and I have no intent to fall in against anybody's wishes, especially yours, Jeff. I understand, I understand, I do.
No, I'm fine with that part of it. I mean, I still have questions about encumbering the money for a year and a half or two years.
Right. Well, there you have to trust the auditor and the finance officer. You've got the trust that they've conveyed those numbers to you all and to us.
Well, it's election year for Sam, and like I said, if he's, if he didn't run again, then he wouldn't be here next year, but he's gonna say, well, let's put, you know, 3 million in a two-years. He's not even gonna be here, so I guess you're-
I wouldn't do that.
Well, and that internal, we came up with the committee group, because it is a joint effort, but only you guys really know what-
But we have the laddered, but we have the laddered proposal here.
Right.
So.
Is there, is there something about, is there some-
Trying it out. I don't know. As long as we do get to have, you know, basically, we do approve your recommendation.
Well, I think, you know, we are gonna make more money. I think by laddering, you know, you've got 1 million that'll be a year, and you've got, you know, another million that will be a year and a half, and then you've got two years. The way things go, you know, barring something catastrophe, you know, say the, I think we're okay with encumbering, you know, that money that long. It's not-
Can I make another quick suggestion? I mean, Jeff, in order for everybody to feel comfortable, if you all wanted me today just to commit to 3 million to go out just one year, okay, and 2 million to go out 30 or 90 days, I'm fine with that. What I need is for you all to agree on the amount that can be invested, and if you all want to say, have a big input on, I'm fine with that. But let's have you all get in the business of telling me how much, and you all get used to delegating the authority that the policy gives me about duration and instruments. Obviously, I'm showing that I'll listen to you very carefully. So if that makes you feel more comfortable, stay away- So, if that makes you feel more comfortable, to stay away from a longer-term laddered portfolio going out two years, and normally, Jeff, it's one, two, and three years, but to take your sensitivities into account.
Eric, what's the benefit of going out two years versus one?
Today, the difference would be 2.2% versus 2.25%, so twenty-three basis points on, yeah.
Kind of depends on what the market does, it could get better, it could get worse over that year, which.
So, I mean, if you feel more comfortable going a shorter term to start with, until everyone's comfortable with the investment process, we could do that, and do a three, six, and nine, or a six, nine, twelve ladder, instead of a year, eighteen months, two years. Then you're only committing for that twelve-month period, instead of going out longer.
I mean, we've got to be, get comfortable with it. I think once, once we see, I think we will be more comfortable.
Well, that's why I'm, that's why I'm offering right now, if you all want to break from what we all had agreed to previously, in order to accommodate somebody, that's, I don't have a problem with that. I'm trying to get the precedent set, that you all tell me how much, and I, listening to my investment, fellow investment committee members, and you all, then invest it, you know, accordingly.
And Eric, once those come due, would you come back to ask to reinvest that money? I mean, would that be the plan?
The policy, the policy actually requires me to. I cannot then, I mean, excuse me, the policy says I can do, I can take that and reinvest it in another leg of the laddered portfolio. And what I'm saying here publicly and in the minutes is, I wouldn't do that without coming to you by telephone and email, and Debbie, and the three commissioners in a public meeting, if that's what's required, absolutely, yeah. I'm required to come before you all, either on paper, or in person, or both, every thirty days anyway, to show you how the investment is doing, how investments are doing, so. I prefer sticking with what we all agreed to, one, one and a half, and two-year ladder portfolio, let's say, two million dollars in a thirty-day, but if you all want to adjust that now, I'll leave that in the form of a motion or further discussion. Is Renslake going to be talked about? Has that already been?
Oh, yeah, we're just starting to phone her.
I thought, I thought Renslake was going to be the long one.
No.
I would suggest that we go out a year and try it out, and as we become more comfortable, we extend timeframe with the dollar amount, as he comes back and things come due.
And I'm happy with that, because in a year, rates will be higher, so, if that's, if that's.
Are we also, three million for one year, and then reviews or reports of how it's doing compared to maybe how it would have been done, and adding the part of it would be a U.S. treasury? Or do you not want us to say that?
As far as having to do in the report, you mean?
No.
Well, I mean, the, the motion now is that we invest three million dollars in a one-year treasury.
And hopefully, two million in a shorter-term bill, thirty or ninety days.
Well, there's, I will make a motion if you want.
So, basically, it's just how much money are we comfortable with?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's the amount of money, number one, and then, number two, is the length of time. I do have questions about being, being able to encumber that amount on the money when I may not be here in two years. So, it's still tied up, in two years, it'd be up for renewal, but.
Well, any of us as family members, if we invested money on behalf of our family, and then we're unfortunate to pass before it matured, it's still a wise financial decision for the entity, the family. I'd argue the same thing for the county, whether any of us pass, or leave, or resigned, or for whatever reason are no longer here. It doesn't make the previous decision unwise or financially unsound. So, I understand what you're saying, I just.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you there, but, you know, as easy as it is to look from the outside and go, you know, you run the county just like a business that's not nearly the same. So, I, I agree with you. You don't want to leave the money laying there, and we can put that money to work. We've got plenty of buildings we can fix, we've got plenty of roads we can fix, computers use all the time, that Ridenhour guy, you know. So, yeah, I, I agree with you there.
Well, I look forward to investing the money, and getting a much better rate than what we're getting right now. The first thirty million is doing very well. We had a very fortunate and solid response from who ultimately got the depository bill, and so, this is all going forward, as far as I'm concerned. There's been a few bumps along the way, but that's, after nine years, it's nice to finally be out of the gate, ready to put our excess cash and get some.
Will you reduce that?
Chris, when you get.
Well, I'm just, I mean, just looking at some, some of our fund balances here, and some tangency, where's, where's the money going to be coming out of, what funds?
The bulk of it would be general fund, except for law enforcement, and possibly the health insurance fund.
Can you give me specifics on?
I think it kind of depends on what his ladder is, to kind of determine.
So.
Anywhere from one to two in general, or law enforcement, probably a million out of health insurance.
Okay, so, we talked about three, and we talked about five million. So, if you take three million, where's the money coming from?
Which one would we be doing in the long term, I guess, is what that one was, or it was laddered, if we go for one year only, or that laddered term?
Right, right, yeah, three-year laddered, or three million laddered over two years, I mean.
We would prefer to do the bulk of it out of general, so, two out of general, and say, a million out of law enforcement.
Okay. So, we talked about a million out of the health insurance fund, so, that comes into play with, if we do five million?
Yeah.
And so, if we did five million, you got two out of general, one out of law enforcement, one out of health.
You could do an additional two, a million out of law enforcement.
Okay, so, two, two, and one.
Yep.
So, I mean, I was kind of at the three, I mean, I was pretty comfortable with the laddered three, I mean, the, I mean, but when you look at a thirty-day investment, I mean, that's, I mean, nothing happens around here in thirty days.
Well, I think we're, Eric was coming up with the nine.
I think right, I think right now, in that thirty days, we were really looking at the money we're setting aside for the health department building, so, it's kind of the timing issue of when we think we're going to need that. I mean, he could definitely do thirty days and roll it over into another thirty days, if we're pretty confident that we're, if you go out to three months, we're, we're getting close to the point where we're thinking the community health center's going to be done and ready to go. So, it's determining whether or not we're going to need that in thirty days, or three months, and then seeing after that point if it's still available or not.
So, that's 1.5, right?
And I think you could do two, I mean, I don't.
Okay, I just, like my wife, she likes to round up. Actually, she rounds down, I round up.
About twelve dollars. It was twenty.
So, I mean, I, I guess I'm good with a thirty-day, two million, I mean, that's what you're kind of talking about, Eric?
Yes, sir, yes.
Two million on a thirty-day maturity, and then I'd be good with the three million on a, on a laddered, so.
Stick with the year, year and a half, two-year?
Yeah. So, if we're agreeable with that, I mean, that's, that's where I'd be, so.
I'm good with that.
You look confused.
With three million for one year.
I missed how much and how long, so, I was assuming right then.
Thirty-day for two million.
Thirty-day.
And then the three million would be in the ladder portfolio, with the one year, one year and a half, and then a two-year, correct?
Right.
That's what you recommended.
A million, one year, a million, a year and a half, and a million, two-year.
Right.
And then, I guess the other question would be, when we ladder those, are we going to look to increase the terms as we go forward, once those start to mature, or?
I would come back at some point.
I think we need to review every time they come, whether or not we need that money back in, to serve the nation, or if we can reinvest it.
Right.
My, my recommendation in coming back, say, a year or so from now, would be to make it longer, because once rates go up a certain point, they're not going to keep going up. So, at some point, when it starts to plateau, the market thinks that they're about to plateau, that's when you want to lock in lower rates, because at some point, they're not going to keep going up and up and up, people quit buying houses and cars and getting loans of all kinds. So, in the next two to three years, we'll reach kind of the peak of where interest rates historically have ever gone anyway. So, at that point, and hopefully, everybody in the commission and the investment committee will feel comfortable, then going out in a ladder portfolio that reaches out the full length, that's in the investment policy, which would be three years. So, it'd be a one, two, and three later down the road, but that's assuming everybody still is comfortable with going out in three years. But you can understand the trend of higher rates doesn't go on forever, and when you reach the end of that rate-raising environment, that's when you try to lock in the longest-term interest rates available, which would be, for us, a three-year treasury bill, so.
And I also think you need to think about long-range planning, what projects you guys have in mind, when you think that you possibly can do them, so that we can try to plan our cash flow around that.
Right.
Somewhere down the road, we have to do something with the jail.
I'm okay with what we just talked about, the three million in the laddered portfolio, and two million in the thirty-day. So, I guess if you get that all written that up, then we can come up here and vote to execute it, or do we?
We can do it right now.
Make a motion right now that says that's how it's to be.
The commission authorized, yeah. Have you written any of it down? Do you have a draft?
Just, no.
Well, I mean, obviously, we're going to appropriate the money, and you're going to invest it like we just talked about, right?
Absolutely.
And if, and if that all doesn't happen, then we got serious problems, but.
I'll have competition in 2020, that's, that'll be what happens.
Your office is going to be up in Bell Tower.
At the jail.
Watch it, Mark.
Oh, we're going to make a motion, yeah.
Sound fun place to be up there.
At the jail.
So, I mean, we're, we're basically going to appropriate, or put into the policy, five million, right?
I would like you to say that we're going to appropriate two million out of law enforcement, two million out of general, one million out of health department, and in that same motion, say, three million for a one-year portfolio.
The laddered portfolio.
Two million for thirty days.
Do we have to designate which fund is?
I don't know that you want to designate the funds.
So, if something happened at the law enforcement center, we'd be able to pull out the money that is a shorter term and use it if we had to, if there's a emergency with them.
Right, I don't, I don't think you want to designate what.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure when it comes to the bookkeeping part, so.
So, I mean, what going is, is we got to trust Eric to do what we just talked about.
I've never had a problem with that, it was just, like I said, that I think ultimate control is still.
Well, he's going to come back to us every thirty days and give us a report.
And I'm going to talk to Debbie and Kristen weekly, if not, you know, coming out of the gate, they're going to be a lot.
So, I mean, obviously, if we need to not invest that two million dollars after the first thirty days, we tell Eric, hey, we need it, so, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep, if he says there's a better way to do it, then he can kind of propose that to us, and we can go, okay.
I mean, what are, what are we comfortable with this motion saying, that we're going to, we're going to give the investment officer five million dollars to invest?
I, I think you just probably need to designate that you want two million in a very short term, and the other three million in a ladder, longer term.
We just talked about that. I mean, we recorded this, right?
If you have the motion that says that, then.
Well, I mean, if you guys want to do it that way, I'm okay with that, but, I mean, that's like.
I mean, I don't think you have to get any more specific than that, but I would say that you want two million in shorter, and you want three billion in a longer ladder.
I know, it's like saying, okay, I trust my kids, but I'm going to put this little tile in the car so I could track where you're at, if you tell me you's going to your grandma's, and instead, you're over here at the bar, you know. I know it's what it looks like.
Your kids track you.
But we're going to put a tile on you, get how much, yeah, I think they do, maybe.
Okay.
Are we good with that, Eric, or?
Sure, yeah, let's just.
I mean, I don't think you're restricting that it has to be a year, a year and a half, and two years. If it's a better deal to go out nine months, a year, and a year and a half, I think you're giving him the ability to do that, but you're saying he has three million to go out a longer term.
And I appreciate what she's saying, and we all agree what I'm going to do anyway, one, one and a half, two.
Right.
And then a thirty-day note on the two million, so, I appreciate it being worded that way, though, absolutely, so.
I'm, I'm fine with the long term and the short term, and saying that's, it's not going to do that, so, it gives you a little bit of leeway, and we can all play in the same sandbox, and.
Soon as I get the sand out of my eyes.
Let's kick the little bitch, taking my ball, going.
No peeing.
All right, so.
So, I move that we give the investment officer up to five million dollars to invest, two million in short-term, and three million in laddered investments.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I knew that was going to be easy.
Sixty seconds, right, Eric?
That's what I thought.
We don't get to see you all the time, Eric, because I think our money's worth. Yeah.
Okay, before we do, Renslake, the letter of support for Cedar Ridge Apartments, we, we did the one letter, and then we came up with another one, saying we're, they were in compliance, and I think I've got it in my office, but.
What were you talking about?
Letter of support for Cedar Ridge Apartments, three.
Okay, I remember there was an email saying there was another letter.
Yes, and we, basically, we, Melody wrote up a short letter, I can go get it, it just says that.
They were in compliance with all regulations in the county, and. There was a letter at one time that said that there was a, they were in compliance with the comprehensive plan, which there was no such thing, and so, anyway.
Yeah.
So, we said it, just a formality.
Yeah.
Yep.
And all three of us signed it, so I'll get it, okay.
I move that we approve and sign the letter of support for Cedar Ridge Apartments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we'll go back to Renslake.
You guys are on five million dollars, too, aren't you?
Better get somebody to pay hefty for Renslake.
All right, well, I guess we had this on the agenda a while back, about getting rid of some of the properties that we've got, don't really need to maintain anymore, so we'll see if we can get rid of them for best use.
Right.
I know we kind of kicked around some ideas of having them submit proposals, you know, what they're going to do with and everything. I've reached out to a couple of people I talked with at Renslake, and had been in discussions with, and, you know, brought to the table that, you know, State Tech does some of this stuff, and might be interested in doing it for just the cost of the fuel, and maybe some equipment rental, but I've not heard back, so, figure we can move on with it.
Yeah, I mean, I know you and I have had discussions, and I think our concern is more on what they're going to do with the property than it is what they're going to pay for it. And so, I mean, I'd just like to see us, put it out, advertise it, and, you know, have somebody come up with, with two parts, what's your plan, what's, what's your price? And, and then we'll just, you know, we'll just decide what we think the best plan is, and, and then, also with that, I'm just thinking, you know, we need to have, somebody's going to need to be able to have the money and the wherewithal to, to move forward with the plan, so. to, to move forward with the plan, so. And I don't know how we go about wording all that, but I don't want to give it to somebody that has a great plan but doesn't have any money to, to make it happen.
So, some, I don't know, almost a request for proposal.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a, not a bid.
Right.
How much do we spend a year on maintaining that right now? Do you have any idea?
Not right offhand, but basically, all we're doing right now is just cutting grass out there. We cut a portion around the lake that's traversable with riders. As far as the lake bed itself, we've not done anything. It's grown up in trees since this was drained. So, I can get that number to you, but it'd just be a matter of cutting grass every couple of weeks, probably. It's not cut on a regular basis like our grass out in front of our buildings, but probably every couple of weeks during the summer.
Would that be regulated by Corps of Engineers yet?
That's the question, the unknown, whether or not the Blue Line. Previously, the Blue Line stopped at 54, I think, is where it was at. Since they opened it up, I don't know if the Blue Line has been extended by the Corps as a regulated stream. I cannot tell you.
Maybe something's might have to probably look into as well. I know that when I talked to them before, that they basically were going to give us a, I don't know, like a free pass. I said, look, if you sell it, if the residents out there want to buy it, we'll give them a year from the date that they buy it to make it back into the lake. That's been a year or two ago that I've talked to them, so that'll see if that still stood. So, I mean, it's going, may not be able to do a whole lot with it, maybe wetlands.
The way it's drained, I'm not even sure it qualifies as that anymore.
Starting to get a creek cut through their channel, so. That's what you said last time, so drove out there and looked at it, and you can see a definitely, or definite channel that's going to it now.
Yep. I mean, you never know. I mean, put it out there and put out an RFP for it and somebody turns something in and we'll decide and see what happens.
So, are all the lawsuits settled that had Renslake involved in it at all? Okay, so it won't be tied up in litigation. So, what kind of direction are you going to need, Ms. Jen?
How long you want to advertise it when you want to? I mean, it sounds pretty open. They're going to submit what they want to do.
Give us a plan?
Give us a plan and the funding, or your funding plan as well as your grading plan or your, you know, I think we can help work with Jennifer and help work with that.
I see our end of it being kind of the easy part. They're the ones, so how long do you want to advertise it? Do you...
I'd say let's have a pre-bid meeting too, so we can try to address any questions that may come up. I mean, we can have a meeting up here and if they want to know, you know, what we're looking for, or do you think just submit some kind of proposal?
I mean, be glad to answer questions with, with anybody. We can have a RFP and have a pre-bid or a pre-proposal conference for questions and...
I'm assuming you're willing to advertise?
Yep.
How many weeks?
Jeff, can you just put it on the front pages every week? Sunday paper, just some kind of article that we're interested in proposals and they just need to have it just by May 1st or something?
I think Alderman Lake would be good.
Julie's going to fight him for that one.
I think it's going to have to be for an extended period of time, just to give people an opportunity to get a plan together.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that and...
So, I don't know, sixty days or ninety days or?
May 1st might be, just, it'd be sixty days out.
Yeah, I mean, residents that are out there may still submit something too. I'd be more than happy if they did.
Yeah, I would too.
So.
Can we, I mean, obviously, we're going to advertise, but can we send out letters to the neighboring, neighboring landowners and whatnot in that area?
That's what's going to be my question. Do you want just the, the properties there but the lake or the whole Renslake subdivision, which would include Deer Dane and Cody and all the others surrounding that?
Say, any of them that ever had any right to that lake should be included. Was Deer Dane in on that or was it just the ones that...
I think Deer Dane had the right to fish it, to...
I don't have a problem just letting them know what's going on.
Like I said, we can...
Even if they live on Deer Dane and they'd like to do something, it's a, I don't know, what's a stamp cost anymore, 45 cents?
Yeah, I mean, just a postcard or something.
50 cents, emails.
Yeah, how many stamps?
Obviously, let's advertise it and notify residents in that area.
It's complicated.
Give them notice.
Be acceptable, I, I guess, for Jennifer stepping out, advertise it for three weeks and then say, May 1st, you know, something like that.
Yeah, and I guess we can talk about if we want to have any kind of meeting or if you have any communications. It seems like there's a lot of questions. Maybe we can have a meeting, but there's no sense having a meeting, just have a meeting. We have a lot of those, like tonight.
Obviously, if you have someone that has questions or whatever, we can, we can talk about it further.
Yeah, if something comes up, we can put out an addendum, you know, to whoever's... Well, we really wouldn't have a list of who to send it to.
Well, now, I just post them anyway on the website, so I can take that approach.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any other properties that we were, need to get rid of yet?
Not at this time.
So, we did a few of those a while back, so. All right, enough direction.
Just long as we get it done before you leave.
No, you're going to hear some.
Hold the baby until then.
I know, I was like, make sure. And I'm like, that's great.
I know where you live, we'll just drop it off. Here's some mail you left at the office.
We know where you live. We'll hold the baby while you...
She's going to make you take both of them and leave.
Those are the responsibilities that come with that, Eric.
I don't do housecleaning.
Okay, other issues before we go into closed session?
I have the letter from the Baptists who want to do the, on March 6th, they would like to do a Cole County prayer gathering on the courthouse lawn. It's, they've been doing, praying across Missouri and they, I think they've prayed on 92 counties, so they're getting close to finishing all of them.
Don't say they pray on 92 counties, that sounds...
They did, so we need them to pray for us.
They pray, they pray in, they have prayed in 92 counties.
They have prayed in 92 counties. They're going, they're going to pray for us. But it would be March 6th and 8:00 AM.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, you're going to lose me, but Eric...
Okay, that's all I've got.
Yes, so, sorry.
I might announce the library's open again.
At County Park?
County Park, so.
Good.
We had, the Girl Scouts had a little library out there where you could come out and read books. Someone took it upon themselves to burn it. I think I, I built, rebuilt it for them out of metal, and I think they had unveiling last night, so it should be back open for business.
Okay. We get a picture of that and put it on our parks website, maybe?
I think it was in the paper.
Send it to me.
Was it today?
We'll give it to Melissa.
Yeah, I thought I saw something about that too. It might have been this morning, before my call there. I remember reading it, but I don't remember it.
And we've also had a request to plant an apple tree out at County Park for Sneeders.
Cliff's...
Cliff's, yeah.
For who?
Cliff's Sneeders.
An apple tree?
I think two of them.
Good, then we can have deer hunts out there.
Instead of geese problem, we'll have deer problem.
I'm not saying we don't already, but...
Anything else?
No.
We got closed session?
Yep, I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, Sub 13.
Second.
A roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.